Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, March 8th, 2011 Regular Meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. We have Ms. Reich, Mr. Liu, Mrs. Brand. Hello. Mrs. Dow's on her way, I believe. Mrs. Zahn, Dr. Tittle, myself. Mrs. Iakonos here, Mrs. Albin, Mr. Carey, and Mr. Fattab being present. And let's all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on the agenda, number three, is Presentation. Presentation of Elementary Health Curriculum, Grades K through 5. Dr. Rosado, and I think we have to move, right?
Thank you, Mr. Matola. We are very pleased this evening to be presenting our pre-K through grade 5 health curriculum. This will actually bring to fruition our pre-K through 12 health curriculum as we brought forward the middle school and high school health curriculums in the last two years for Board approval. This evening, we have two of our health educators to present to you. We have Mrs. Lori Mediati, who is our coordinator for pre-K through 12 health in Fairfield, and Mrs. Cindy Stetter, who is a health educator from Fairfield Ludlow High School. This curriculum has been worked on for quite some time by nearly all of the elementary and preschool teachers in Fairfield. They've all had a chance to weigh in on it. Lori has met with focus groups of teachers, also parents, the Family Health and Family Citizens Committee here in Fairfield, and it also went before our Board of Ed Subcommittee last week. So, we're very pleased to welcome Lori and Cindy, and take it away.
Welcome to the presentation of the Elementary Health Education Curriculum. As Dr. Rosado said, I'm Lori Mediati. I coordinate the health disc program. And with me tonight is Cindy Stetter, one of our health educators. The last revision of the elementary curriculum for health took place in 1998. Thank you for allowing us to take some time this evening to present our revised document. The health curriculum is delivered by health educators in grades 6 through 12, but mainly by the classroom teacher in pre-K through 5. Our department works closely with the Citizens Family Life Committee, which acts as a source of guidance for curriculum, lessons, and resources. The Family Life Committee consists of local parents, students, physicians, nurses, psychologists, social worker, and clergy, as well as Dr. Rosado and myself. We will begin tonight with looking at how a strong health education program can influence a student's academic success. Throughout the past two decades, a number of influential voices have noted that the critical impact of health in student's success. For example, the Carnegie Foundation noted that no knowledge is more crucial than knowledge about health. Without it, no other life goal can be successfully achieved. In this presentation, we will provide you with an overview of the research on the links between student health status, their behaviors, and their success in school. We will also provide you with a greater understanding of the influence of school health programs on student's success. And then finally, we'll present you with an overview of the revision goals and additions made to the pre-K 5 health education curriculum. The National Association of State Boards of Education says, "Health and success in school are interrelated. Schools cannot achieve their primary mission of education if students and staff are not healthy and fit physically, mentally, and socially."
Good health is necessary for academic success. Like adults at work, students at school have difficulty being successful if they are depressed, tired, unmotivated, being bullied, stressed, sick, using alcohol or other drugs, hungry or abused. Fairfield's pre-K through 12 health education curriculum is a comprehensive school education program based upon the Connecticut and National Health Education Standards. Comprehensive school health education is designed to address all aspects of health, including the physical, mental, emotional, and social dimensions. Comprehensive school health education is designed to increase students' knowledge and their ability to use that knowledge to make healthy decisions. It involves curricula that is age-appropriate for the student. A study of 3rd and 4th grade students that included a control group of students who did not receive comprehensive school health education and an experimental group that did showed that students who received comprehensive school health education scored higher than the control group on assessments in reading and math. Students learn at an early age that the decisions we make will impact our life goals.
Another study shows us that students who receive comprehensive school health education increase their not-health knowledge, improve their health-related skills, and also decrease risky behaviors. In the next few slides, you will also see that there is included pictures of our health lessons in our elementary classrooms in Fairfield. The pictures will focus on nutrition, education, dare, scrubby bear and hand washing, emergency preparedness, and violence prevention. When followed up in high school, four to six years later, students who received a two-year decision-making and problem-solving programs in elementary school showed more pro-social behavior and less antisocial and self-destructive behaviors. Health and education go hand in hand. One cannot exist without another. This is a quote from our former Surgeon General, and she goes on to say, "To believe any different is to hamper progress. Just as our children have a right to receive the best education available, they have the right to be healthy. As parents, legislators, and educators, it's up to us to see that this becomes a reality." Teachers use a variety of resources to deliver the curriculum from programs that can be used in the classroom environment to community members visiting with important messages on good health for our students. It's not uncommon to see the police, the fire department, even nursing students from Fairfield University in the elementary classrooms during a health lesson.
Our curriculum is based on the Connecticut Health Education Standards, which are based on the National Health Education Standards. They were developed by applying the following characteristics of a literate person in the context of health: critical thinker and problem solver, responsible and productive citizen, self-directed learner, and effective communicator. Core concepts focuses on providing accurate information, and the other seven focus on developing the skills to practice the core concepts. The curriculum is separated into five units: substance abuse, wellness, family life and human growth and development, safety and accident prevention, and violence prevention. The wellness unit focuses on nutrition, fitness, disease prevention, and hygiene. The substance abuse prevention unit focuses on decision-making skills, and as the students get older, also the impact of making risky decisions. The safety and accident prevention unit focuses on ways to stay safe at home and in the community. The family life unit focuses on support systems in our lives, and in grade 5 includes the puberty lesson. Finally, the violence prevention unit focuses on developing strong relationships and resolving Our revision project began during the summer of 2008 by meeting with our district pre-K teachers and a select group of grade K through 5 teachers to set the goals of the project. Creating a pre-K component was the first step in the process. We worked very closely with our two pre-K teachers, Karen Giguento and Susan Totaleo Smith, in developing a document that reflects the social skills that are developed in a strong pre-K program. The second phase of the project was to work with a group of K through 5 classroom teachers and invite them to share their thoughts on current objectives and resources, as well as discussing the need for additional objectives that reflect current health trends. The K through 5 teachers have played a vital role in directing our department and fully understanding the needs they see in their students. We interviewed them at the beginning of the process and sent the document to them as a final review. Listed here are our revision goals that reflect this process.
Listed are the additions to the existing curriculum. The additions were suggested not only by the classroom teachers, but by the Citizens Family Life Committee and Parent Focus Group, who felt that in order to meet students' health education needs in 2011, we would need to include the following areas: more nutrition objectives, more stress management objectives, disease prevention and hand-washing objectives beyond the primary grades, an introduction to Lyme disease and lice prevention, which is a new addition to our curriculum, and finally, objectives on social networking and Internet safety, all reflecting the sign of our time. Let's take a closer look at these additions. By grade 5, all students will have an understanding of how the food pyramid works, what snacks are healthy, as well as meals and drinks. They will have a better understanding of how nutrition impacts growth, and they will be able to read food labels and restaurant menus, as well as have better understanding of the benefits of physical fitness. The stress management objectives focus on an increase in developing skills to be better communicators in relationships, as well as demonstrating how to make healthy decisions. Both of these skills lead to lower stress levels. We expanded the objectives for the disease prevention and hand-washing past the primary grades, as well as including objectives associated with tics and lice. And finally, teachers, parents, and the Family Life Committee all had a concern that there's an increase in grade 4 and 5 students who use the Internet. So, we included objectives on the dangers of social networking, cyberbullying, talking to strangers on the Internet, accepting dares associated with the Internet, and also spend some time showing the link between an increase in screen time leads to a decrease in physical As we've outlined tonight, there's clearly documented connection between health and learning. Kids who are healthy physically, emotionally, and socially learn better. Our final goal is to provide elementary teachers with the tools, I'm sorry, to provide elementary students with the tools to make healthy decisions, not only in elementary school, but more importantly, when they're faced with the peer pressure that is often part of the middle school student's life. Our goal is that as they enter the middle school year, they are prepared to face any social challenge. Fairfield's health education program provides students with the opportunity to acquire the knowledge and skills that are necessary to make healthy decisions. And in both the short term and the long term, these better students build better and healthier communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dow, welcome back. Nice to see you again.
Glad to be back.
Been a while. Do any Board members have any questions, comments? Mr. Liu?
I just want to thank you very much for this very exciting presentation. I really believe in that this is such an important part of getting kids to learn and completes the whole picture of an environment for learning. I'm especially impressed with your early, I guess it would be intervention with Lyme disease, which I've worked with groups on trying to bring into the schools, as well as the hand-washing and the substance abuse, and also the social network presentation, I think, is very, very important. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to reading it more.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
Thank you. I actually had the opportunity to hear the presentation, not the video portion in Subcommittee, and just my full compliments. I was very impressed on the issues, how current it is, how well-thought-out it is, that it also isn't presented in the elementary and pre-K as health, it's integrated throughout the day, so that the children, I don't even know if they really realize that they're learning health and healthier habits. There was something that came up, and we were talking about something going on at the Board of Health, relevant to what's going on in the school district. We have a lot of high school students who are using tanning salons and increasing their sun exposure, and Ms. Mediati was very kind enough to say that they will incorporate that age-appropriate moving up, so kids appreciate the need to take care of their skin and watch the sun. So, I honestly, I don't really, nothing but good things to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Anybody else? Mr. Carey?
So, as a parent who has heard about, but not had an opportunity to go to the 5th grade parent talk.
Well, I've been there.
One of the things we've been actually hearing about, say through the chair, and Dr. Tittle or his team, in terms of our new approach, is it's not only important for how we instruct, but choosing what we instruct. So, in terms of, I guess, for lack of better terminology, some of the things that might end up being viewed as more controversial in here, how much of this do we have control over? Is this state-mandated that we cover each and every one of these topics? Is this our choice? How does that work?
The state mandate for health education is K through 12 substance abuse education and K through 12 HIV/AIDS education, which in the early age is talking more about disease prevention and the hand-washing and germs, and as they get older, more information about HIV. The rest are the recommendations of the state in comprehensive health.
And how do we deal with parent concerns if we do have parents that have some trepidation in terms of the topics that we're discussing, the content?
They come to the Family Life Committee, and then we discuss it at the committee and talk about the current lessons and look for their approval and direction.
So, would, if we had a parent that just morally object to one or more of the topics that was coming up, do they, are they able to help change the curriculum? I can't imagine that would be the case.
We have an opt-out policy, a state opt-out for family life and HIV/AIDS.
Gotcha, okay.
So, they can opt out.
So, how many people opt out, just out of curiosity?
Well, I'll tell you, I've been teaching health for 25 years in Fairfield, 16 at the middle school, and then the last 10 at the elementary position, and I probably have had total in 25 years, maybe 12 to 14 parents opt out. It's not only a well-thought-out program, a well-delivered program, it's one that we have districts within our state search us out and ask, "Can we take a look at your program?" And it's been a long-running, the Citizens Family Life Committee is actually the longest superintendent-appointed committee that we have in Fairfield Public Schools, and it's been in place since the 1970s. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Iakonos?
I just have a follow-up to that, just out of curiosity, for the families that do opt out, what do they do in place of that, if anything?
The classroom teachers provide an alternate activity, and then they always recommend that the parents spend some time at home going through the material with them.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, moving on to Item 4, Approval of Minutes. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of January 18th, 2011, the special meeting of January 20th, 2011, and the regular meeting of January 25th, 2011. Mrs. Zahn?
Mr. Matola, can we separate them, please?
Sure. So, let's do the first one.
I need a second.
Yeah, I know. So, the minutes of the special meeting of January 18th, 2011. Can I have Mrs. Brand seconded by Mrs. Zahn? Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the special meeting of January 20th. You abstained?
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see that. Mrs. Dow?
You abstained for the 1st.
From the 18th.
You're gonna abstain too, right?
No, not for the 18th.
The 18th.
I will for the 20th, because I was in surgery that day.
Okay.
So...
All right, so the special meeting of January 20th, 2011. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Brand seconded. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Okay. Two abstain, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn, the rest in favor. And the regular meeting of January 25th, 2011. Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Brand seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we ready to vote? All in favor? Against? Abstain? Mrs. Dow abstains. Thank you. We're all set with that. Moving to Item 5, Student Committee Liaison Reports. Fairfield Ludlow High School Student Liaison, Allison Reich.
I have no report.
We don't have anyone from Ward. Mrs. Albin?
I have no vote.
Mrs. Brand?
For the curriculum or the policy Subcommittee, we deferred a vote on the chair until all members could be present. Mrs. Zahn was absent that day. Relative to, and you obviously saw what the item of discussion was already, relative to the Board of Health, we reviewed with the audit and the budget, and I do want to make something clear to folks, and I'm not sure everyone appreciates, that the school nurses in this town actually work under the auspices of the Board of Health and not under the school district. That, in fact, as I said before, I mentioned it already about the issue that came up at this committee, and then I was able to relay that in the Subcommittee. For CES, we also reviewed the budget, and I think has already been noted, there is no tuition increase. They spoke to the Governor's Proposal about the vocational educational schools. I think some of you actually may have seen it in the newspaper as well. God bless you. And there is no plan today, and quite frankly, until a plan is proposed, they don't plan on really acting on it, because they don't even know if this is gonna come through. And I think all of you also received recently in your email an invitation to the CES Awards Night on April 8th. They did a tech evening, and they had, I don't think it was evening, it was daytime, but they had the tech coordinators in each school district attend, and I actually think it was a great service. One of the things that came up is that they're looking at how children learn and how we can use technology. They mentioned something about, quote, "cloud learning," and what they're talking about is not actually even having to use a website or have software. So, what technology can do for education, I don't think even at this point in time we can fully appreciate, but it clearly is going to be on the cutting edge. One of the school districts, Dearie Inn, has what they call an open system, and they use the technology, can be at home, have homework assignments, have schoolwork as necessary, and also can use their own equipment and is compatible with the school districts. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Anything, Mrs. Dow?
Not really. Our Finance Committee did not meet this month, but not to fear, we will be meeting plenty in the future, once we get the budget back from RTM and Port of Finance.
There won't be any cuts.
Okay.
Right. Don't worry about it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Do you have something on that point?
No, I forgot one.
I'll go back to you.
Okay. For CAE, this Wednesday is the Day on the Hill, when you can, Board of Eds, and PTAs and other people, interested parties may go up and meet with our state legislatures to hear what they are discussing about for laws with education, so that's Wednesday. I'm obviously not attending. I don't know if Dr. Tittle or anyone else, Mrs. Albin can give us a report on that.
I have a conflict tomorrow, so I'm unable to be there, but I would like to thank Mrs. Iakonos for representing Fairfield tomorrow. Governor Malloy will be speaking to everyone at 10:00 a.m. at the Bushnell tomorrow, which is new, it's not occurred at CAE Day on the Hill before. Governors haven't normally addressed us. So, I think Mrs. Iakonos will be there for that, and the day after that goes on, where anyone in attendance is able to wander the halls of the Capitol. They're not in session tomorrow, so you'll be over, if you want to go over, Mrs. Iakonos to the Legislative Office Building, that's where you'll find all the legislators, and they're supposed to be in their offices and available for us to be there. They do have some committee meetings, you can pop in and out of the different committee meetings. I'm not certain that education is meeting tomorrow. And not to steal Mrs. Dow's thunder, at our last Board of Directors meeting at CAE, and I meant to bring it so that copies could be made for everyone, and I forgot, I'll send it into Central Office, we reviewed the whole packet of bills that have been submitted to the Legislature on education. I think it'd be very helpful for not just members of the Board, but for the public here in Fairfield to know what's in the hopper up there this year for education. Some of those legislation will probably curl your ears when you, or something, when you read it. So, I will get that into Beverly, so that copies can be distributed. Sorry.
That's fine. And then SEPTA, their February meeting was on transitioning, which is what do you do with your child when they're out of the system then, and then they're going to be on their own in adulthood, or, you know, in many cases with you, but what to do once the services stop when they turn 21? So, that was their February meeting, and they will meet again tomorrow evening.
Thank you. Back to you, Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, my apologies. I also had a 6 to 6 meeting, and I wanted to mention something that happened. Because the school was cited and had, by one or two students, didn't meet the yearly progress, they then, because of the child left behind, were then assigned and are obligated to hire an outside contractor to come in and help educate the students. And what was explained, that I felt was very interesting, is they don't work with current staff. It is independent, and the state provides them a list of contractors, and then when that list gets pared down to where they are locally, you're probably dealing with only five to six. The problem is, the people that they're dealing with, the contractors, there's no way of validating what their training is or what their qualifications are. So, I, you know, we're subject to it, it's a mandate, they have to do it, but we don't even really have assurances that educationally it's a very sound approach.
No child left behind, actually. Thank you, yeah. Okay, we are with Mr. Fattab.
Yeah, the Transportation Safety Advisors had the pleasure to convene to decide two issues related to bus stops. So, we had done that, we decided it, and those have been completed now.
Mr. Carey?
Facilities did not meet?
I forgot, Mrs. Iakonos.
My apologies.
Steal my mic time? Come on. Let's see, Special Project Standing Building Committee, we're sort of in a holding pattern right now for the Sherman Project, just because we have to wait the 14 days before somebody can file for a referendum, before we can really move forward, but we're getting to design and development and construction pieces, so things are moving along there. At the RTM level, the Sherman Project was approved, as everybody now knows, and the Board of Finance, obviously, we're in the process of working through the budget. I did represent the Board in Mr. Matola's absence last week, and there was a discussion about better communication between that Board, the First Electman's Office, our Board, Central Office, and I will defer to Dr. Tittle on that in his report later on in the meeting.
Now, Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Facilities Subcommittee did not meet, so there's no report. PTA Council meeting featured the Brian Fagan Awards, which Mrs. Hoag very kindly gave the names of all the wonderful teachers who won those awards, and they're sitting at my printer at home, so I will attempt to bring that next month, a next meeting where I have to recognize those teachers. In addition, Board of Finance members, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Tetrow, gave an overview to the PTA Council, PTA members, and anyone in the general public of the town budget process, which was very informative and helpful for people to understand the process that we're currently in.
Thank you. Mr. Liu?
Thank you. No report tonight.
It's my turn. I was at the Straffield Building Committee last Tuesday. Things are moving along there. The only concern...
The only concern was that because of the weather we had this winter, they were behind a little bit on some of the progress, but they think they're going to be able to make that up. And then most of the meeting was spent on going over change orders, which is like watching grass grow, and it took a long time. So that's Straffield, but it's moving along. Thank you. And last but not least, Mrs. Zahn.
No report, thank you.
Okay. So now we're on item number four, six, excuse me. Superintendent's Report, A, Initial Response to the Operational Audit. And Dr. Tidal, you're on.
All right, thank you. This is quite the task. If you recall, the board received the operational audit on December 14th, and it looks like this, when all printed out. 260 pages, 24 commendations, 74 recommendations. At the same time, we're developing the budget, or in the final stages of developing the budget, and so the understanding was that I would come back to the board with some initial reactions to it around this time, but understanding that this could be an ongoing discussion with the board, because it has potentially multi-year implications. One of the important things to note when the presenter was here was that no one who undergoes one of these audits, even if you agreed with everything that was in the audit, ever just does them all at once. It's just not the way it's designed to be laid out. It's a multi-year project, even for the items you agree with. So how I took this was, so that I could get this done in a timely fashion, I dressed in my response, and there's a written document, and it's posted on the district's website, and I think there are copies in the back, it's another monstrosity. It's 22 single-spaced pages. It's not as long as the audit, but it feels like it. So I took this approach with each item that had a cost or savings or cost addition. There were a number of items in the audit that had no cost savings attached to them. By and large, I didn't address those in here, because what people are most interested in right now is, we're in the middle of budget season, is which of these with the money attached, you know, what's your reaction to those? So you will not see all 74 recommendations addressed in here. So one of the first things we did internally was to determine where there were savings attached by Prismatic to determine whether or not the, if, in fact, we did implement the recommendation, that those savings that they said would actually be there. They did some calculations based on, you know, average salaries and so forth, and in some cases, their numbers were pretty close, we don't have any dispute with that, or the difference is minimal. In other cases, there's a fairly substantial difference, and in some cases, they just, there are no savings. They're wrong, in my opinion, to be blunt. That is separate from deciding whether or not the recommendation has value. This is just simply a matter of would, if we implemented it, would it save the money that they say it would save? And one thing that they did not include in this report was any impact on unemployment compensation. Now, we don't carry unemployment compensation in our budget, but were we to implement a substantial portion of these, there definitely would be people who would be laid off, and they would be entitled to collect unemployment compensation. That unemployment compensation, the way it works right now in the town, is that would be carried on the town side of the budget. So on the one hand, it wouldn't impact the board budget, but it's kind of unfair to look at it just from that perspective, because it's all one pocket at the end of the day. And there were some, and so that's the sort of the cost side of it. And then I tried to make some judgment, initial judgment, and that's why it's labeled "initial reaction," to what the impact would be on the school system were we to implement the recommendation. So would it save the money? Did they have that right? And then secondly, what would be the impact on us? In some cases, I gave you, you know, a few sentences, in other cases, you've got several paragraphs. That was sort of directly related to the amount of money involved. So I'm not going to go through every one of these. I will point out that there were 24 commendations, and although nobody asked me for my opinion about them, I simply attached them at the end so we could finish on a positive note, because I'm a generally positive person, and I wanted to look at the bright side. There were several recommendations in here that in fact would cost the district money. There were recommendations to add staff in certain departments, there were recommendations to add to other costs, and by and large, you'll see in here that many of those recommendations, while noble, and they have the number right, let's face it, in this environment, we're not doing them, at least not in the near term. But as a longer-term goal, you know, perhaps it's something we can look at, but at this point, I'm not sure anybody really cares about what I think about adding things to the budget, they want to know about the subtractions. I should also point out that, as you know, because we highlighted in the budget book, there were a number of recommendations in the audit, or areas that were suggested by the audit, that we've already captured, within the budget, that you approved. So some of these, even though we put the budget back out to you about a month after getting the document, we did carry some of these savings. So that's also part of it. So let me just hit some of the big ones. Ones where they're either, they thought there were large savings and really there aren't, or they're just large savings and we need to talk about it further. So one has to do with paraprofessionals, and that's finding 3-12, it's on page three of the document, and basically, they suggested that in the special education area, that we reduce 16 paraprofessionals and hire teachers. In this audit, they did not account for adding the teachers, they simply took the reduction for the paraprofessionals. Nor did they give us any guidance as to how many teachers we'd have to hire to replace the paraprofessionals. So our staff took a stab at it, and again, you can agree or disagree with the way we did it, but districts that have reduced paraprofessionals often end up hiring about one certified staff member for every two paraprofessionals that is eliminated. And when you do that, you basically wipe out all your savings. So there's other costs involved in making this change, but that's one where it appeared on paper to have a large savings, but in fact, the savings was minimal. We also disagree with the way that they explained the staffing, there's a chart in there about that. I stayed 10 miles away from the kindergarten one, because there's really two ways, if we choose to do anything with kindergarten, first of all, there needs to be further review of this, and that's true of some, any significant program impact, I wasn't going to go with that right away, because that really needs more work, and more on that at the high school level. But basically, you know, there are two ways to, if you want to save money in your kindergarten program, there are two ways to do it. You put everybody on extended day, and then you are able to eliminate a couple specialist positions, because the kids will not get as much music or art under the extended day model as they do under the full day model. They do get the PE, but the others they don't get. That's where Prismatic came up with its savings, under their version. The other way to do it is, of course, to go to the full day model, and then you eliminate your transportation savings of transporting the children in the middle of the day. Their savings are roughly the same. So really, what this boils down to is, if you find you want to save money in the kindergarten program, the choice is which is better educationally, not which saves more money. And that is an issue for us to decide, not for Prismatic to decide. So it's not that I didn't think about it, it's just that I don't, they cited research that extended day had benefits. I think there's equally compelling research the full day has benefits, and then there are people that think the choice model that we have now works best, is the best of both worlds, and so basically, that's where that one is. I'm not, the music schedules in the middle school one, while we didn't, I didn't disagree with the amount of money they were talking about, you're talking about decreasing the program, it would be, I think, a big mistake to do it, so I said that was not a good idea. The big one that's out there, they had a lot of thought about, and it was, again, something that is just too big to just leap into in any, you know, immediately, is the whole house system issue. That's finding 319, and it starts on page six, and I have a rather lengthy discussion of that recommendation. And there's no huge difference in the savings that we found versus them, so it's not a question of will this save money or not. The house system has been around for as long as anybody can remember. It doesn't mean it needs to continue in exactly the same form, just because we've always done something that way, doesn't mean we always have to do it that way. And in fact, you know, the house system has, over time, undergone some changes. Hasn't been exactly the same way over the, you know, 58 years it's been here, or whatever the number is. And so to some extent, the savings are not necessarily a reflection of the house plan, but how many positions they're eliminating, and what the impact of eliminating those positions would be. So if you eliminate, in this scenario, the way they describe it, a certain number of positions, that's where you're saving money, whether you call it house plans or not. I don't think they truly understood the distinction between a dean of students and a housemaster. The impression from the audit was that the housemasters were the ones doing the discipline. That's not the design of the house system. The deans are non-administrative positions, handle mostly discipline, and the housemasters are in charge of curriculum instruction and the overall workings of the house, and it's described in here in detail, and I don't want to go the whole nine yards. You know, when you're talking about eliminating, you know, guidance counselors, secretaries, deans, you're talking about service reductions, right, pretty significant service reductions, whether you have a house system or not. The high schools, while they're not the largest high schools in the state, 1,400 is a pretty good-sized high school, I think there's a compelling educational reason to keep the house system at this point. I'm not advocating eliminating the house system. I think we can look at the house system and see how we can do it better, and if there's a way to do it more efficiently, that may be something we look at over time. But this is a very dramatic change, of course, that I'm just not comfortable, you know, riding in here and putting my stamp of approval on this without really having an opportunity to have a full examination of all the implications of this, in this town, at this point in time. And that's really the biggest ticket item that's on here. And I think we've had good results from our high schools. Those of you that saw the PowerPoint presentation last night at the Board of Finance, saw some of our results indicators from the high school. If you didn't, it's on the website as well. And while there's always room for improvement, if you look at our college acceptance rates, the kinds of colleges our students go to, if you look at the advanced placement success we've had, if you look at our standardized test scores, you look at SATs, you know, I think we have a lot to be proud of, and I think this recommendation to jump into it, you know, at this point would be a mistake. That's my opinion. There's only a couple other ones I want to talk about that I'm going to stop and leave time for the board to discuss or ask questions until the time limit. One is requiring high school English teachers to teach five periods a day, instead of four periods a day, with a writing conference. That would save no money. I think they completely misunderstood how assignments are done. There's a contractual limit of 105 teachers per English teacher. If those 105 kids are divided into four or divided into five, it makes no difference. So it is completely dependent on, the cost to educate a student is completely a function of how close to the 105 limit you get. And therefore, the question then is, is it better educationally to have four slightly larger classes on average at a writing conference period, or have five smaller, relatively smaller classes with no writing conference period? In fact, when you look at the data, our best results on our standardized tests at the high school level are in writing. So they, I don't know, it's not a good idea. Okay. The, I think there's, yeah, anyway, I think there's only one, there might be one other where there's just no savings. That may be it. I think that's, I think I'm just going to stop and draw your attention to the summary sheet at the back. By the way, they had one with no savings, and we found $500,000. That was the Bell schedule, so you didn't have to pay me anything to come up with that. The, oh, seeking legal counsel about reducing non-public transportation, that was the other one, that was $400,000. There's nothing there. We've done that, that's on the town side of the budget. We're obligated legally to provide it, they know we're legally obligated to provide it. That number appeared to be pulled out of the air. And not to cast disparaging remarks, because there were some good things in here, I just don't want to go over them all, and some of them we're implementing. So the chart on page 20, for me, the bottom line is this, they estimated savings of approximately $4.6 million. My calculation, our calculation, is that number is really closer to $2.1 million. But there are some that are to be determined, and to be fair about this, there's some where they, for example, said, do something with having kids opt out of the high school buses if they drive, and they have a figure attached to it. I'm not saying that will save nothing, we just honestly don't know, because we actually have to go through and go through the procedure and see whether it really saves any buses or not. So there is a TBD there, minus the unemployment compensation. So I'm at the point of saying, it looks like the whole thing, and this is if we're all implemented right away and nobody had to collect unemployment, will be $2.1 million, we've already realized savings of $866,000. So to me, what's left on the table, if you did everything, is about $1.2 million. So I'm, you know, really looking at all of these, there may be elements of them, or there could be areas that we have to look at further, and we can capture some savings in some, so we're not rejecting every recommendation in here, although some of them you heard that I'm pretty staunchly opposed to. And I think that we will continue to look at them, and then as we move through our budget process in this year and future years, if there are some elements we can capture, I mean, there was a nice recommendation they made in there about capturing some of the costs for custodians and utilities within the food services. I mean, that was a, frankly, I think it's a great idea, and we did it, because it does save us money, and it's legal, and, you know, it makes sense. So there were some things in here that I would like, but some of the big-ticket items just either aren't there, or they would really be harmful. So I'll stop at that point and let you either ask me questions or discuss, and it can always be on a future agenda for more discussion, because it's not something I think we're going to take any action on immediately, as far as I can tell.
All right. So why don't we start with questions? Mrs. Iaccone.
Through the chair to Dr. Tidal. Can you just talk a little bit about the unemployment compensation and the fact that if we were to go through layoffs, how we're responsible for, you know, 99 weeks these days of comp, and the process for that, and that hits the town budget? Can you explain that for the board?
Yeah, the government entities are different from private entities with respect to unemployment compensation. Government entities pay the claims directly. So if the board lays off an employee, and that employee is not able to find work, then, and they go to the unemployment office and they start to collect unemployment, under the various stimulus packages, you know, it used to be 26 weeks for unemployment, and then sometimes it would get extended to 39 weeks, and then 52 weeks, and right now it's 99 weeks. And so those costs, whatever those actual claims are for that individual, they get billed to the town. And so the town ends up paying those costs directly. It isn't like we pay into an insurance fund, and then the fund pays for unemployment. We would pay it directly. People who could get laid off, they might find work, and then if they were to get laid off again, they would come back to any prior employer within the last year to pay that claim. So people will go on and off your unemployment. And I'm sure the town gets a report every month from the unemployment agency that shows exactly who's on, how much they're collecting. There's a cap on it. Most of our employees would be at the cap. I'm not sure what it is these days. Could be $20,000 a year, in that range. So it's something that, were there to be a substantial number of layoffs, would be something the town would have to carry in its budget somehow.
But just to be clear, so everybody understands, we don't carry that in our budget.
Correct.
That hits the town side of the budget, and they are responsible for dealing with those unemployment costs. We don't quote-unquote eat those.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Carey?
Can you just tell us, Dr. Tidal, a little bit more about the, I'm a numbers guy, I think it was $429,000, the psychologist's school?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just give us 20 seconds or?
Yeah, the psychologists perform important services here, and this would be a service reduction. They all have caseloads, they perform a lot of services that are not necessarily legally required services, but they're important services, and they're described in here in terms of individual group, parent, family counseling, learning strategies, instruction, consultation with teachers. You know, they go above and beyond just the legal requirements, it's something that people in Fairfield have come to expect, it's something we're very proud of. And so, basically, this is a service reduction issue. Psychologists are involved with identifying students who have disabilities, and if we mess that up, then that can have some pretty serious consequences down the road, well in excess of the savings from these positions. And if we cannot conduct evaluations in a timely fashion, you know, there's a timeline for conducting psychological evaluations, if one is so requested. If we don't have the staff to meet those, we have to pay for outside consultants to conduct those evaluations, or we're in violation of the law. So that's another risk. And then whenever you're not complying with those timelines, because you don't have the staff, that's never an excuse that flies, and so you end up in some legal difficulty. So, you know, it's not something that we're saying, "No, we can't ever reduce a position of psychologist," but five seems a bit radical. And so, at this point, I'd be concerned, that level of service reduction, you know, that would concern me, but that's the basic thought on that one.
Are there other roles within, let's say, the elementary school? Tutors, language arts coordinators, could they pick up some of those extra tasks that were, are we paying more to have a psychologist do some of these things that we could maybe have someone else help us with, or is that just not?
Not really, I mean, they're, you know, what they're doing is largely right within their certification area, and if you have a certified person doing it, say, like, whether you're paying a psychologist to do it, or paying another certified individual, they make the same salary. So, that's a wash. And the work of psychologists, you would not want to have picked up by non-certified employees. So really, in terms of that, someone has to do the work, and I think that would be, so I don't see any cost savings there, Tim.
Yes, Mrs. Bracken.
Through the chair to Mr. Carey. In addition, we had a discussion in subcommittee regarding suicide risk, and there are only three qualified individuals in the school district who assess a student's risk. One of them is a school psychologist, another is a social worker, and another's a nurse. So there are only really three in any given, that are qualified to do that, so that's another, I think, very important thing that they do.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, since I don't see anyone raising their hand, we've kind of talked about this a little bit, are we starting to somehow implement some type of a program/study with respect to the high school student buses? Because I think we really want to try to, try that this year to see what type of savings, and I'm talking about how many high schools.
Opting out. Right, we, yeah, we haven't started that, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the housemasters about it. But there were a couple different recommendations in there about opting out of transportation that we'll have to do some preliminary work on. One of the challenges is that the kids who are driving this year at the high school, half of them are leaving, and they'll be replaced by other kids who are driving next year. And this is all about, you know, where the kids live and what bus they're on to determine the savings. So that's, that's something that we may need to kind of pilot next year, to see what the, you know, impact would be. These things just tend to spread themselves out the wrong way, you know? You're probably likely to end up with, you know, four kids on each of 10 buses, you know, who are driving, as opposed to 40 kids on one bus. And when you end up with fewer kids, you know, it doesn't necessarily translate to the savings. And so, I'm uncomfortable in terms of developing a budget, or even doing a budget cut, without having a real firm handle on what that savings might be. Otherwise, I think we're just, you know, involved in, you know, just picking a number out of the air. So, we can look into that between now and the close of the school year, and see if we can nail that down a little bit more, but I haven't really had a chance to talk to Mr. Coyne or Ms. Reel about it.
Okay. And just one general question, is the house system unique to Fairfield, or is it?
No, it's not. No, it's come and gone. Probably the, the one closest, not closest to us, but Greenwich has a house system that operates in many ways similar to ours. That's one I know of for sure. I don't know what the situation is around the state. Many high schools around the state are substantially smaller than our high schools. So, I mean, part of the rationale for the house system is to have smaller learning communities where kids are attached to, you know, more adults that know them very well, so when you can attach a group of 400 kids to one housemaster, one dean, three guidance counselors, the same secretary, then that shrinks the feel of the school. That was a whole direction the state was moving in for quite some time, in terms of smaller learning communities, breaking down the anonymity of large high schools. So I found this an interesting recommendation, because it seems to fly in the face of a lot of that movement that I thought was still alive and well, but maybe not in North Carolina.
All right. Yes, Mr. Carey?
Just a real quick follow-up to your transportation question, actually two parts. One is, if we do pursue this because there is state mandates for transportation, will we need a legal opinion to determine if we can legally opt kids out?
We probably would.
Okay.
We probably would. Yeah, I think that, the way the recommendation read, parents would be able to opt back in, given a certain notice, if circumstances change. Like, if I, you know, ground my daughter, and I want to send her on the bus, right? Then I want to have the bus available. Otherwise, I'm going to drive her to school, and that defeats the purpose. Now I'm serving the punishment instead of her. So, we want to make sure that, you know, if you have that, you know, if having to have that safety net in place legally means you're going to have no savings, then again, what are we doing this for? So I think, I think you're right, I think we would have to get a legal opinion about that, because transportation is a right.
The second part of that, and what kind of struck me during the budget conversation, was, I kind of came into this with the thought that, well, you know, we have 400 kids, I think, between the two schools net, so that's 10 buses. But it's not really, it's tiers of buses. And can we get kind of, if not right now, at some point in the future, an idea of what one tier is versus a whole bus and savings? But suddenly, that starts to water down the impact, and I kind of want to be able to make that distinction, so I can understand, at least conceptually, what we're really going to save by going through this exercise.
Right, well, that's the magic of John Fickie, "magic" being in quotation marks.
Sounds like a TV special.
That's true, maybe we should have that, you know? We have, you know, there goes Guyson Las Vegas, and we have John with the black box, poof, outcome, transportation savings. What we would have to do is, we'd have to actually look at the, I'm sure what he would do is, he'd have to look at exactly which kids wouldn't be riding the bus, and then he'd look at the buses that could be saved as a result of that. In some cases, if you're only, you might just save one, you know, only saving one tier worth of bus, but it could be used for something else, and there's a whole domino effect, and I can't explain it very well.
Yeah, actually, I'm not looking for that level of detail or exercise. More or less, we're three-tiering buses now, is that what we're kind of up to?
No, that's what we're moving towards for next year, because of the change in the high school start times. Most of our buses don't run three tiers.
So if we took like an afternoon run out, or, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Negligible impact.
Yeah. If, just in general, what that number is?
Right.
Does it sound to me, unless I didn't understand the conversation properly, that we'd be more likely to lose a run here or there versus a whole bus?
Right, and the savings between a bus doing two tiers, just like, if you have one bus, and it does three tiers, and that bus, just in round numbers, costs you $60,000, including fuel, reducing that bus from three tiers to two tiers may only save you like five grand.
Okay, and that's, yeah, that's what I'm.
So you need a big thing, so you can eliminate entire buses, or what you want to do is get more of your two-tier buses, you know, get several two-tier buses to run a third tier, then you can eliminate a whole bus, now you save the full 60.
Mr. Fattaby?
You have a quick question related to this summary page on page 20?
Yes.
You very nicely identified all the number of findings, and the particular savings that they recommend, or they say there'd be savings, and what we believe the savings will be. And then you identify at the bottom that the savings are already realized of $866,000. But yet, I guess my question arises, is in reviewing this document, I realized there were some situations or some cases in the document where you identified those savings were already realized. But I didn't add it up to see if all those savings that were indicated in the document being realized already add up to the 866. Can I find in this document all those savings identified, or are there somewhere else I would have to go?
It's in the budget book.
All right.
It's not here, it's, you know, it's, because I didn't distinguish in here, in some cases, which ones we've done and which ones we haven't done. In the budget book, right in the front of it, there's a list of how we arrived at that, and the numbers square up. Of course, the $500,000 for the buses is the biggest part, then there was the interns, then there was the food service savings.
Right.
And a couple other small things, but it's.
Yeah, so a number of these findings already on this summary list have already been achieved, so it's really deciding the ones that have not yet been achieved.
That's correct. That's correct. So 9-7, you know, put an asterisk on that one, that's already in.
Done, yeah.
Right.
All right.
Okay, and the 6.2, 6-2, already done, so, yeah, but that's where you'd find it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, good question.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tidal. Let's move on. The next matter is financial report.
I'm going to have Bonnie come up, and while she comes up, I want to say that this was one of our projects for the year, that she and I talked about doing for the board, I think we've talked about it as a board, that we would do a quarterly reporting out of the MUNIS system to the board on the actual expenditures year-to-date versus budgeted Took us a little longer than the quarter to do it, so you're getting one now, and then you'll get another one a month from now, because the quarter really ends on March 31st. So this is a bit of a trial run, in terms of the format, the level of detail. And so I'm going to turn over to Bonnie to explain it. It's enclosure five, statement of account, summary by major classification. Bonnie, over to you.
Thank you. As Dr. Tidal said, in your packet is enclosure number five, and it is our newly-developed format by major classification. Tonight, I'd just like to walk you through the report format, and as Dr. Tidal also said, next month you'll be receiving the report as of the end of third quarter, March 31st. And we'll be reviewing that one in greater detail concerning our financial position as of third quarter of this fiscal year. We've taken our operating budget and distributed accounts into seven major classifications that we've used historically as a part of our transfer protocol. We've been working on all of our end-of-year projections, identifying budget shortfalls and funding that we've earmarked to cover these shortfalls, so that will be a part of the report next month. I'll highlight some of those things for you as we go through the report. If you start on the first page, you'll see the seven categories that we have, and looking on the first page of the report, under Personnel Services, what we have here are all salary-related accounts, including contractual salaries, hourly salaries, interns, extracurricular salaries, substitutes, degree changes, and our attrition accounts. Just working down that first category, you'll see, for example, an amount as an unencumbered balance of $24,691 under school administration staff. What that is, is staffing change at a point in time when this report was run, that amount of money has since been moved to our, what we call staff replacement accounts, which are like our in-and-out accounts for balancing all of our salary accounts. It's where we hold the money, that is the account that has the $350,000 deficit in that we start out the year with, and as you work down that page, you'll see that there is a balance in that account right now, a rather significant balance. But that account has also already been earmarked for all of the places where that money goes. It is holding some vacancy positions in there right now, there is money that goes to the custodial substitute account for the attrition for the custodial staff, and there are other accounts that that money is used for. This is all part of the reporting process that in the past we have done for you in written format, generally starting in the April timeframe, when we start talking about making budget transfers, and bringing you up to date on where our financial position is at that time. The next category is our fixed charges category, which is all of our health insurance, life disability, social security, pension, and retirement. And you'll see that we do have a significant amount of social security money left yet. This is paid out on a payroll-by-payroll basis, so that takes us right through the end of June. We do a lot of projections to make sure we have enough money in that account. We will be realizing savings in the life and disability insurance account, because as you were notified, we have changed our disability carrier, and we are going to realize some savings in this year's budget, which is very good, because we've also identified some shortfalls that we have this year, that we're going to be using that money for to help offset. Pupil personnel expenses are all of our special education expenses, but in that category, we do not include any contracted salaries, gifted, or capital outlay. We tried to keep all of our salary accounts together, and all of our capital outlay accounts together. Gifted services comes under our support expenses for instruction. If you're, as you look down that category, you're going to see some major, major account deficits in there. Tuition, for example, at $2.1 million. The reason for that is that also, at this point in time, we have not made any of our transfer, expenditure transfer adjustments to our, in the case of special education, our excess cost grant. We had not, we had no money in that account until last week. Now we will be making those adjustments. So the next statement that you see will reflect a lot of that expense being moved to the corresponding grant where those funds are to come out of. That's a lot of what goes on in the special ed program there. We do also know that we have a shortfall, that we are trying to identify funds to cover for the end of the year, because we will be having a shortfall in special education, as we've also mentioned to you before. The next account is our school expense account, and this includes all of our school budgeted accounts, again, excluding anything that comes under contracted salary or Personnel Services. It includes accounts that are funded centrally to support the schools, supply, text, material accounts, sports, and activity accounts, conference, staff development, copying, hourly tutoring, gifted, facilities rentals, and extracurricular transportation. So basically, all of the accounts that the schools have within their school allocation when they do their own budgeting, and also the support accounts that we provide directly to the schools for supplies, books, and materials. A lot of that, the categories themselves are not going to change next year, but because we have changed our operating budget format for next year, that you saw in our new budget, when we've moved some of the roles and responsibilities around as to what the schools are going to be budgeting for, the names will change a little bit, but the categories will go to basically remain the same, because we've included them in the major category here. Looking down that account, you can see that schools have expended about 65% of what they had allocated. Again, there are many reasons why accounts have balances at this time of the year, and for example, on the book supplies and materials account, there are textbooks that haven't been purchased at this time. been purchased at this time, some of them are coming up for your board approval, and at that time, purchase orders are going to be issued. All of this will be done prior to the June 30 closing of our financial year. The support expense account includes all of the instructional program improvement accounts, our early literacy, any centrally-funded instructional programs, non-special ed tuition, and central support business operations. As you can see, there are a myriad of different types of accounts in there, and what we have done so far is identify some of those accounts where we are going to have balances at the end of the year to help us offset, basically, the special education shortfall that we know we're going to have. Then the sixth category is maintenance, operation, and transportation, and this includes all of our maintenance and operation accounts, it includes our utilities, equipment repair and maintenance accounts, technology, maintenance accounts, all transportation accounts, with the exception of any school budgeted extracurricular transportation, that's up under the school expense account, because the schools have responsibility for the expenditures of those funds. Again, we have gone through and looked at some of these accounts to identify any areas that we might have some potential savings for next year, and those are the types of things that I'll be talking with you about at your first April meeting. The last category is capital outlay, and this account includes all of our replacement and new purchase accounts. As you can see, the majority of that has already been expended, that's not something that we let sit around there, it's almost 100% expended, because that's the kind of capital outlay expenditures that we want to have in place and in the schools as early as possible. That's a brief overview of the categories that we have. I know Dr. Title said, keep it short tonight, you'll be doing more next month. If you have any specific questions about what might be included in a category, or anything that you would like to ask me at this point in time, I'd be happy to field any questions.
Mrs. Brand?
And please excuse, because I don't assume to be a financial person, when we're looking at the Personnel Services on page one, and we get to number 133, Staff Replacement, do we budget a negative, because it looks like the first line?
Yes, it is. The first, yes, we do budget a negative $350,000, knowing that with attrition, from the time that we build our budget in December, and the time that we actually staff all of the positions the following year, a full 18 months total before that final, the next year's budget is expended, that we have over a track record proven that we can make up salaries, and rather than hold additional money in our operating budget, we have a negative number actually built into our budget, that we have to make up first before we can use any other additional attrition money for any of the identified reasons that we really use attrition money.
Do you mean, for instance, that you hire someone new and someone else retired, and so there's a savings with that?
Yes, that's part of it, that's part of what happens. We hire, a position is filled, a position that is vacated is filled at a lower salary, there's a savings involved in that. Staffing actually changes from the time we build the budget until June, when we are getting ready to start staffing for the next year. So that's something that we've had in our operating budget for quite some time now.
And then the only other question I have is, some of these accounts already look like we're, we've used them completely.
Yes, we have.
Okay, then I anticipate that we will have a proposal for a lot of transfers in order to reconcile this.
There will be transfers, and transfers within category are what the schools do and what we do internally. The transfers that we bring to you are the ones between major categories that require the board's approval, or things that we want to highlight to you that are our problems, and how we have addressed those problems.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you for the explanation, Ms. McQueen. In terms of the pupil personnel expense, you mentioned that's mostly our special education?
That's correct. Pupil Personnel Services is our special ed expenses, are our special ed expenses.
Is the appropriation line, is that the budgeted town budget tax dollars versus, the conversation I always hear, the net versus the gross?
That's the net.
That's the net.
Okay.
That's the net. And that, and just so that you understand, that's the net in how we've defined pupil personnel expenses. That doesn't include any of the special education salaries, that's all under Personnel Services, so it's exclusive of that.
So is the appropriations the net, is the expense the gross, or, as I see, we have the minus $2 million?
The expense is the gross right now.
Okay.
But that will be corrected when Bonnie posts the income from the excess cost.
That's primarily coming out of excess cost or other grants?
That is coming out of excess cost exclusively.
Right.
If I heard correctly the other night, we are, the first round, we're at 80%, but we're not done yet, is that in terms of excess cost estimate?
Yeah, the first cut of it is 80% of what we're entitled to, under the formula, doesn't, it's not 80% of these expenses. When you hear 80%, 75% of excess cost, there's a formula for excess cost, that under the formula, we'd be entitled to, let's say, $4 million hypothetically. 80% means we're gonna get 80%, we'd get 3.2 of it, so right now, that's what we're looking at, but we will not know that till May, because there's another filing and there's another adjustment.
Correct.
And so that's a preliminary figure, and sometimes the final varies by five or six percentage points from that.
Do we know if the curve looks like it's gonna be bending up or down there?
That would be asking me to predict.
Leonardo's saying, ah, whatever.
I would have to be Nostradamus to get that one right, so.
The reason I ask is...
History teachers out in the room in the back.
If I recall last year's Board of Finance discussion, we have a contingency account with the town for special education.
Right.
We came in, I think, at 70, the town, or Mr. Flato, wanted us to be at 100% budget, and the Solomon, the Solomonic, how did you use that term?
Solomonic.
Solomonic, thank you. Determination was 82 or 82 and a half?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Right, so 12 percentage points spread is what they're holding in a contingency account.
So right now, we're looking at potentially being able to recover 2% from the contingency fund if it stays at 80?
That's right.
What's that look like? $50,000?
12 percentage points was $328,000, so we'll do some quick math.
So it's not huge, okay. The other question I have is, it looks like we're running, we're 2/3 of the year, but in page two or three, maintenance operation 311 Utility Services, looks like we're running ahead in utility services, where, if I estimate correctly, 66% through the year, and we're at 56%, so are we having good experience there, or are we looking like?
No.
Are we going the other way? Am I reading this wrong?
No, we're actually, we're gonna be fine. We're not, we're not having good experience or bad experience, we're right on for that, for our utilities, hopefully.
It's a winter thing.
But it's really a winter, it really is a winter thing.
Okay, so...
And we're okay, we do our projections, we update our utility projections on a monthly basis, as soon as we get the prior month's bill in, we are doing a recalculation on our projections to make sure we're not gonna be short, or how much we're gonna be short if we are, so, but it's, we're not that far along.
Actually, the way I read it was that we were ahead, I thought that because we have 2.1 million left, and we only have four months left, I figured that maybe...
But that, it doesn't work that way, because we don't have February bills in this statement.
Ah.
January bills in that statement, we're always running a month behind on the financial statement.
That answers my question, thank you.
And root for a warm March.
Very warm, but not enough that we need air conditioning.
Correct, right, right. 65-degree days would be perfect.
Perfect.
Or still in Ludlow, that would be 95 degrees on the second floor, but most of the schools would be fine at that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Bonnie, thank you, and if people have comments, you know, offline or whatever, about this report, this is a new report, and we thought it gave you enough detail so you could, you know, see what's going on, but not 169 pages of the ledger, so that's what we're doing. You'll see it again in a month.
Thank you. All right, item C, Board of Finance meeting recap.
All right. Got a headache thinking about it. Where do I begin? This item actually started with the Board of Finance meeting that we had a week ago, right here, where at about 10:30, we got into a discussion about the medical retention fund, the joint fund that the board contributes to and the town contributes to, and it was a heated discussion, so I think some people wanted that back on the table. Then, last night, the issue came up again as part of our budget review. I'd have to say, generally, in terms of the Board of Finance meeting, my feeling was, I thought that it was a good meeting last night, it was a long meeting, thought the Board of Finance members asked excellent questions, felt like we had, you know, reasonable answers to those questions. We do have some homework assignments from that meeting that were, staff is working on, but I think they're, they were all reasonable requests, and we're gonna be able to bring those back, and then next Wednesday night, address those issues with the Board of Finance. The medical funding issue was first discussed by the board, if you might recall, on a meeting we had with the Aon advisors on January 18th. They came here, they sat right over there, and we went through all of the claims, you know, and so forth, that we used to develop the budget proposal, and that was when we had our first discussion about the stop-loss, and my recommendation to change the stop-loss, that discussion came up last night as well, about the wisdom of the stop-loss and whether we had budgeted adequately for that. Then, of course, we had two budget meetings in which we discussed this fund in some detail, and in the budget book, in the new budget book, it's on page 169, the budget number is in there, and the impact on the medical retention fund is in there. There have been some changes subsequent to that, as has happened here in the past, the Aon's predictions of our expenses have changed, and right now, we're standing in the vicinity of $600,000 to the good compared to where we were going to be when we built this budget. We did build the budget based on not contributing as much as the Aon projections would, and that it would result in, were the Aon projections to occur, that the fund balance on the Board of Ed side would still be very healthy, and would still, would be fine, but it would reduce the amount of the fund if the Aon projections were correct. And what came up was that, while that was fine from the Board of Ed as sort of its own entity, the issue was that we were in this internal service fund with the whole town, and that last spring, the one rating agency had addressed the issue of the internal service fund with the town, and by, if it turns out that we end up drawing down on that account by the end of June 2012, that the town may be, you know, risking some of its bond rating. There's two other components to that fund, there's the town's side of the health insurance fund, which has consistently run a deficit of hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes more than that, and there's a long discussion at that same Board of Finance meeting, the first one, about the workers' compensation piece, and that's a fund that's also sort of lumped together there. So from the town's perspective, looking at the big picture, Board of Finance, they're looking at it saying, the only healthy fund of the three is the Board of Ed healthcare, and yet, if the Aon projections hold, and you start to draw down on your balance at the end of the year, that's gonna cause a problem for the town. And so then it became a lot of sort of finger-pointing about, well, who's really, you know, as I said, who's wearing the black hat? You know, here we are, the Board of Ed, again, I landed here, and I was just trying to reconstruct some history, the Board of Ed has constantly run this kind of fund balance, and yet, the Board of Ed was being pinned as being the bad guy when it looks like the town was not funding things adequately. So that became, you know, a bone of contention. I also know that last year, in May and June, when the board made a decision to not contribute as much to its healthcare for this year, to offset a $3 million cut, there was a lot of angst about that all around. It was done publicly, I understand, and so forth, but there was a lot of angst about it, and I knew that, you know, and I've worked with Aon for nine years, and they're always way too conservative, that were we to be in the same situation this year, were we to get to May or June, and it would be very difficult for us to go in and take another bite out of that same apple. So it was highly likely that the $1.9 million reduction in the fund wouldn't really happen. In fact, in two months, we've, we're $600,000 toward it. The budget this year, had we budgeted the full $1.9 million, the board would have been faced with either bringing forward a 6.3% budget increase, which would have been real popular, or would have had to cut $1.9 million, most likely out of staff positions, to really make sure that the town's fund balance stayed at the same, at the same level. And then at the end of the day, chances are, that $1.9 million wouldn't really happen. And there's also very little, in my view, incentive for us to leave, kind of leave money in that fund, because under the terms of the memorandum of understanding between the previous superintendent and the first selectman, any funds that remain in the medical retention fund at year-end can be taken by the first selectman and used for any purpose, and there's no limit to that. Given that the town has constantly underfunded its side of the fund, and has in the past withdrawn money, it kind of made sense to use this sort of rainy day fund as such to help balance our books. And it would, though, and I said this last night, I think it does mean that because of that, I think the board is closed out from, and I would advocate not, you know, were there to be a budget cut occurred, and we got to May and June, I think at that point, you cannot take another cut in that account, no matter what. I mean, that's like a blood pledge I made last night, swore, but that's fine, because we've already taken it, taken it in there. And, you know, as I reconstructed what happened last year, I should also point out that there was such a substantial change in the claims between November, when the budget was put together in May, the fund balance had gotten so high that the chief fiscal officer had told Bonnie that in fact, the board could take $1.95 million out of this and be fined fiscally, and she recommended $1.6 million, and then that's what the board ultimately did. But, you know, at that point, it wasn't clear whether there was a rating agency issue. So that's really it in a nutshell. The fund, in June 30 of 2009, the fund was about $4.4 million on the board's side, and the actual fund balance right now projected for June 30 of 2011 is estimated to be $4.1 million, and that's if there are no changes in the claims experience, right? So the notion that the board has drained this fund somehow is, you know, not 100% accurate, but it did crest up, there was a big balance in it last spring, before the board did that. So some of it, I've just sort of compiled a history of it, just to educate myself about the whole thing, but that was what we did, I think it was laid out in here, but there were two issues of concern last night around this issue. One was about the projection of what would happen to the fund balance, and the second was around the stop-loss. And I know we had extensive discussion around stop-loss. In fact, I remember that, and we have, actually, I think we just approved the minutes for some of those meetings, so, anyway, that's my sort of take on it. I think we need, you know, some further guidance, I will say that, in, over the long run, I've suggested a solution to this that would involve the town just taking the whole fund, they can still keep the accounting separate, but take the whole fund, we would have it off our books entirely, we wouldn't make a decision about what the fund balance is, we would send our employee contributions over to the town's side, and then they could manage that as a single fund, because really, that's how they're looking at it. They're looking at it as a single fund, but they can't really control what the board does with it, because they don't have line item control of our budget. And so that's the rub. So I'm looking to find a long-term solution that works in the interests of the board and the town, so we can sort of end the... and the town so we can sort of end the, the rancor and just sort of get on with it and then we can maybe start focusing back on how we can educate kids better and pursue the rest of our budget, which has a lot of important items in it. So I'm happy to work with the town. I've made that suggestion, Mr. Hiller thinks that has a lot of merit to it, but it's not going to solve the immediate problem. The immediate problem is still laying out there in terms of what the, you know, Board of Finance would like to do. So that's, that's sort of my overview of that.
Thank you, Dr. Title. Anybody on the, Mrs. Brand?
I, I am gravely concerned about the town's AAA bond rating. I also feel, as a Board member, that I was not adequately informed about the risk of decreasing the medical retention fund balance. I also think that as a Board, we need to think about what we can do to help protect the schools and at this point, also, the town. And I don't know what that is, but I do think we have to work closely with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and come to some kind of resolution with this that basically helps all of us.
Absolutely. Mr. Lew, was your hand up?
Yes, it was. Thank you. I too, I remember very, very clearly the very long discussions about the stop loss. I remember very, very distinctly the Aon people here and what they said. And at no time did I personally remember us discussing about this medical retention fund and taking money from it as building it into part of this budget. And I have a big problem with that because you're going before these other Boards representing the Board of Education. And I know that a lot of us asked you very pointed questions near the end of the budget term of going through this, saying, "Is there anything else in here that we should know about, something we might have missed?" And you said, "No." When, the other night, at the Board of Finance meeting, you actually said, "Well, I wanted to do something different this year. Instead of taking it at the end, I'm going to put it in first. I'm going to put it all up front, build it into the budget." Now, to me, that's pretty radical. It's different, at least, whether you agree on it or not. And please don't misunderstand me, it's not, it's not a point about whether this money is ours or not. It is about the protocol of this Board of Education and its superintendent, that its superintendent is clearly telling us, "Look, this is what I'm doing, okay?" So that we can then vote and say, "Okay," and not find out later something different. And I have a very, very difficult time with this right now, not, not, not only for our integrity point of view, in that the rest of this town has to look at this Board and wonder, "Is all the information that we're getting correct?" But in the precarious position that you put us, that the 1.9 might need to be taken out of this budget if the town feels that parts of it need to stay into that account.
Well, let me, let me respond to that. First of all, were you aware that last year, when the Board built its budget, it built it exactly the same way? That when you approved last year's budget, that you took a $2 million reduction in that fund balance? Then you took a 1.6 in May. I thought we were pretty clear. We have a page in that budget that shows that what would happen to the fund balance. It's that page 169. In fact, I think I recall Mr. Fadabene looking at that bottom number and seeing there was a dash there and saying something like, "Does that dash mean zero?" There was a little back and forth about that. So, and I'll also have to say, at that point, I was under no indication that projecting that kind of change was something that was going to cause, you know, major catastrophe. And so that is something that didn't come out till much later. So I saw this as the way the Board had budgeted this in the past, it left a healthy balance. We're in a situation where we have some significant costs to absorb in this year's budget. If in future budgets, we have to add some more money back into the medical retention fund, we're going to be in a better position to do it because we're absorbing a funding cliff of a half million dollars in our money. We're absorbing some employee contracts, employees are coming off of a zero and so they're, they've got a little bigger raise than they might normally have or are likely to have in future years. We're coming off a, you know, major deficit in special education that we're seeking to correct. And so that's where I was coming from on it. There was no intent to deceive anybody. I thought I was as clear as possible about it. It's in the budget and, you know, there was, you know, had I thought there was additional risk involved in this, I clearly would have, would have stated it. And I, I don't know what else to say about it. That's my take on it and other people can join in on it. But there was, and I went back and reconstructed last year, the Board's budget, when it was approved and went forward to the Board of Finance, was going to take the fund balance down from like 4.2 to 2.2 million in the Board of Ed-approved budget. So this was not a change in practice. So I feel a bit blindsided by all this.
I, I think we need to, I, I'm going to say something for a second and we all need to take a step back. This is our budget and the fact that one or maybe some of us were unaware of something in the budget is kind of irrelevant at this time because we voted on this and it's our job now to support this budget. Now, the, the item that we're talking about is clearly set forth in page 169. Now, I do agree that we did not have a whole bunch of discussion on that item. And maybe we should have, but we, we didn't. And I think if that's a bad thing, that we didn't have that discussion, we're the ones who are responsible for it. And, and I say this because last year, which has been pointed out already, when we were talking about the 1.6 million, I recall, and I didn't think of it over the last month either. I recall during that time period, May or June, that Mr. Carey and I think Mr. Fadabene expressed some concern about the 1.6 million and that at least some Board of Finance members were concerned about it. So at that time, it was on our radar screen that if we did this again this year, we should have been perhaps, as Board members, more cognizant because we were here last year, he wasn't here. So, you know, I kind of agree with you, Perry, a little bit with respect to maybe we should have talked about it more, but that, that's our fault and I, I take responsibility for that. I can tell you this, as, we have done as a Board, everything that Aon has asked us to do with respect to our contributions, there's, there's no doubt about that. And I can also tell you that, that the issue now that we have to work with the town with, I've had conversations with the Board of Finance members, conceptually, they have no problem with the accounting here. It's, it's, it's good accounting principles and practices to do what Dr. Title did, but their concern is the amount, the 1.9. And that's a concern, quite frankly, because the town hasn't done its part, they haven't funded their side. So I, I think, there certainly wasn't any intent by anyone to deceive it, deceive us. I certainly don't think that. It's in the book. We deal with so many issues and, you know, we, we forgot about this. This was on our radar screen last spring and we should have reminded the new guy here that if you do this, this could be an issue with the Board of Finance and that's my take on it. I guess Mr. Carey's next.
And just to Mr. Mottola and the last member's point, page 169 of our budget book, which is the Medical Insurance Profit and Loss Summary, third column, estimated 2010-11, run down to the third to last line, balance 3872728, proposed balance 1959617 and it's pretty much there in black and white. So I, you know, that's, that's one thing. And then to Mr. Mottola's point, we voted on it, we own it. More importantly though, let's talk about this issue a little bit because I know, as Mr. Mottola said, we had a very pointed conversation last year and got a lot more information when we got to this discussion and I did have concerns about this and how much we were reducing this. The Board of Finance has a concern and it's an important concern and as a Board, I think we have to work with the Board of Finance and the other bodies in the town to make sure that we're not in a position where we can be, we could be harming the town's bond rating. And I think that we have to be very cognizant of that and I think that one of the things that I'd like to see us do this evening is to empower our Chair to be able to make sure that he does with our superintendent what's necessary to satisfy whatever we have to So that being said, I mean, I think in the spirit of what I'd like to cover here real briefly on this, that, that's the bottom line. The bottom line is that there's a concern that because we've built up the cash reserve, the concern's about how fast it gets drawn back down and what the negative impact could be. And we have to recognize that concern as a Board and we have to work with other Boards to make sure that because we're part of this ecosystem, the way we talked about last year, we, we have to, we have to work congenially with folks on it. The thing that is challenging is that we don't necessarily get to see these wonderful documents, which I'll share with everybody, till after we've done our budget. So it's kind of hard to make those judgments, but I'll pass these around, there's enough for the public to. The first one is entitled, Town and Fairfield Insurance Fund Analysis, July 1st, 2010, December 31st, 2010, and projected through June 30th, 2011. That is current from this year. I also wanted to share with the members, something I shared last night, which I happened to pick up hanging out at Board of Finance meetings last year. And that's called, it's entitled, Town and Board Self-Funded Medical Five-Year Balance and Income Summary. As I see it, there's three issues here. Issue one that I heard about ad nauseam in the last couple of meetings is the 1.6 million that the Board took last year. So I want to kind of delve into that real briefly. The next is what we're requesting in terms of reducing our contributions, which will in turn reduce the overall fund balance. And then third, which Dr. Title addressed, is how do we resolve this problem going on, going forward? I, I heard a very timely comment from an RTM member last night saying that it's pointless to come to these meetings as we spend hours going around in circles, talking about the medical reserve fund, shiny thing over here, and we never get to the substance of what the Board of Ed's budget is so we can make some judgments on terms of merit. So let's talk about the 1.6 million. I just heard something from Dr. Title that I want to validate and it's something I believe I heard from Mrs. McQuain last year. Again, I asked very pointed questions, I was concerned about taking the 4.16 out, but I remember Mrs. McQuain saying that it was 300,000 less than she was told she could take. So the Chief Fiscal Officer of our town indicated that it would be okay for us to draw down up to 1.9 million last spring in terms of...
Let Bonnie testify firsthand to that, but I think the number was 1.95.
And that, that jives with the conversation we had last year. I know I asked a lot of tough questions on this. Okay, and we took 1.6, we took. We reduced our contributions, which had a net impact of reducing 1.6 million. So the conversation I heard last night was, we were on the island. I, I've heard members of the administration say that, we had no idea this was happening. So there's, there's a problem here with that. And, you know, what I guess I want to understand is, if we're doing what Aon's telling us to do to the letter, which we are by the fact that we can see that these numbers are going up, and if we're doing what the Chief Fiscal Officer of this town is telling us to do and the Board of Finance is still dissatisfied, I think we need to understand where we need to be. Because that's a problem and it's a shared problem. So if we look at these numbers real quickly, I'll go to the history because that's an important thing for us to look at. The bottom line in the history, five years, and that was as of last spring, was we ran from $520,000 and the plus up to 5.3 million and from '06 to '10. The town's side was negative 600 through negative million. There's a little note in there, it says 400K that I scratched in, is that's the year that the town moved 400,000 dollars of our money from our line to their line, which artificially degreased us. What's important here to note is that, on average, year over year, we're gaining a million to a million two. Okay? So, I mean, I think that's an, that's an important baseline because Dr. Title has said that Aon's conservative and what's happening is, by following Aon's advice, we're growing our fund on average about a million to a million two a year. So that, that validates what Dr. Title has said. Now, the town's side has the same consultants we have and I can't speak to what they're doing, but I can't imagine that they have the absolute worst experience in medical claims in the history of man that they're coming out negative every year. But it's very difficult for us. It's not for us to speak to that except for the fact that at the end of the day, as Dr. Title brought forth, the way we fix this problem this year, we've made a request. We've requested, can we reduce our contributions by 1.9 million, which in effect would lower the 4.1 million on the second page I've given you? And that's creating gasps to the Board of Finance, there's dissatisfaction there. And I think that we have to make sure that we work with them to fix that problem. But to Dr. Title's point, in terms of this second issue, this problem, there's two ways we fix it. One is we request $2 million more of taxpayer dollars, increase our budget request to 8.9 million dollars so that we can be funding, and if you look at accrual, the second to last line, that's the IBNR, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. McQuain, essentially, that's the reserve we have to have at the end of the year to be whole, based on the advice. So we're going to come forward and have our new superintendent ask for $2 million more of taxpayers' money than he actually needs so that we can be overfunded by $2 million. That's one way to fix the problem. Well, if that's going to happen, then we might as well move that one line that are left to the town's side, that request. But no one wants to do that, right? And this becomes a political football. The other solution is we reduce resources by $2 million. And that's when it's difficult for me to step away from this problem, the emotion of it. Because, see, the reward our team gets, and by the way, if you look at this line, the 4.1 million, to the extent that the town and Board of Ed medical reserves impact this town's AAA bond rating, we enjoy that bond rating through the efforts and hard work of our team. Because if it wasn't for our team, following the consultant's advice, there would not be any cash balance in this fund. There's a negative $800,000 balance rate now projected, the town's side, and a plus 4.1 million on our side. So I, and I think we have to make that clear. Now, what frustrates me and what I'm hoping that we can politely ask the Board of Finance for and maybe empower our Chair to ask, is if we have to reduce some level of that 1.9 and it has to come out of resources of delivering services to an ever-increasing enrollment, I want to understand how that sacrifice is going to be shared. What's the reward for doing the right thing and funding this? And look, I understand, I understand what the concern is, it's a legitimate concern, we're asking to draw it down faster than they want. So we have to come to some agreement on that. But as part of that agreement, if people don't want to fund this with taxpayer dollars, and I understand that, based on this economic, economic situation, the question then becomes, how do we share that sacrifice so it doesn't fall totally on the employees on this side of the line? And is it possible to have some shared sacrifice? That, that's what I, as an individual member, would ask for, for us to politely ask the Board of Finance. And I understand the concerns and the trepidation, but, you know, what I, the way I look at this is that our team has done the right thing. We followed the advice of the Chief Fiscal Officer of the town in what we took last year and that hasn't left the Board of Finance satisfied, so we really need to go back to the Board of Finance and find out what's going to satisfy them. So that, that's kind of my 100,000 foot on this. Now, the third thing though, I wanted to just point, point out, was I, I think the superintendent's solution to this is a good one. And if I, and the solution to this is, if I heard you correctly, Dr. Title, is to turn this over to the town. If I step back from my Board of Ed member role for... If I step back from my Board of Ed member role for a second, I think part of the concern and trepidation is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. McQuain or Dr. Tittle, we have control over these funds by state mandate, so we can kind of do whatever we want, which I think makes people nervous. I'm not saying anything wrong would happen or, you know, disingenuous would happen here. But by moving this fund to one place, and obviously the right place for that to be would be on the town side, all of this goes away. And I think that's a smart way to view this moving forward into next year. So we're not worried and running around and spending all these cycles on this. Let's let the town manage the fund. We'll make our contributions, and let's find a solution to the long-term problem, and then let's look to the Board of Finance for some guidance as to what we have to do to fix the problem for this year, you know, to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the town's financial position. Thank you.
I think I have Mrs. Brand. Then, you want to go first, Mr. Lou? I thought so, but go ahead, Mr. Lou.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matola. I understand completely what Mr. Carey is saying and what you said, Mr. Matola, and you're missing my point. It's not that... It's not about... That is a separate issue, which I am more than happy to discuss, and I think you bring up a lot of good ideas. My problem is, as a board that employs a superintendent, I expect a lot more trust from him in what he is doing so there is clarity when I make a voter decision. So I don't feel blind-sided when I hear the Board of Finance coming up with something and saying, what is this all about? If we had followed, as far as I can see, a proper protocol where the superintendent had spelled out very clearly what he was trying to do, we could have voted on it, we could not have voted on it. We could have helped him say, I know the Board of Finance is not going to like this. But what happened is, we didn't get that opportunity because I don't believe any of these board members knew what was going on.
Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. I just want to say, as a board member, I think this is inappropriate for this public forum, and if there's an issue, it should be brought up personally to the individuals.
I agree. It's kind of like we're evaluating the superintendent's performance, which is totally inappropriate in public session. Mrs. Iaccone?
I agree, and I really, this is not the forum to do this. Dr. Tittle, I believe that you brought forth an honest and forthright budget. I commend you for it. You've gotten commendation throughout the town for doing what you've done in this budget book. It was clear. It was outlined. If we didn't understand it, that onus is on us. We voted for it. We own it. I understood what you were saying. We owe you an apology, not the other way around. We should be apologizing to you because this was highlighted last year. Mr. Carey brought it up, and we never got a formal letter from the Board of Finance telling us that this would harm our AAA rating. But in fairness to members of the Board of Finance, there were some members who did highlight that to some of us on the board. Mr. Carey raised those issues. We should have been clearer with our employee, who is the superintendent of schools, and given him the heads up that this could have been an issue. And to say the reverse is unfair. I feel very strongly about that, and I feel very strongly that this isn't the venue for that. I also feel very strongly that it is in our bylaws that once we adopt our budget, we own it. It is not our job to then go out and undermine it and cut our nose off despite our face. There's a way to do this and a way not to do this, and this is not why we were elected. This is not what people came to see. They don't want to watch this. They are tired of it. They're sick of it. It's why they send their elected officials home. They don't want a dog and pony show. They really don't. And I hope we can wrap this up quickly. I hope we can reach consensus. It's what the Board of Finance has asked us for. It's what we need to do. It's our obligation to the people and the students that we represent.
Mrs. Brand?
I think the fact that we are having this discussion about this topic now speaks to the fact that we didn't prior to a vote. Had we done that, the Board of Finance would have been aware, and we could have reconciled it before we took a vote on the budget. I think it's unfortunate that we find our circumstances in, or find us in this circumstance now. Further, my background's nursing. I'm not a finance person, and I don't claim to be. I actually talk to people who know a great deal more than I about insurance and a stop-loss, and I came to the table with that information. Clearly, I'm risk averse, and I spent a lot of time talking about that. Had I appreciated the other equally, I actually think we would have had this discussion sooner. Now, with that, I don't think it's incumbent upon me, as a board member, to understand completely the financials when they're brought forward. I think it's incumbent upon the professionals when they're bringing it to the board to make sure that the board members fully appreciate it, and I, for one, did not. And I am concerned, and again, moving forward, I think what we want to do is try and figure out something that is going to work, that is going to help the town and help the school district. It's unfortunate we're doing this now because we may have been able to prevent this, had we discussed this at the board table earlier.
All right. Anybody else? Because we should probably move on. Mr. Carey, you got one more question?
I just want to get back to the substance of the conversation in terms of where we are right now. I just want to take everyone's attention back to the insurance fund analysis, the One thing I do want to point out in fairness, the risk management column, there's a workman's comp claim bundled number there, 2.5 million dollars. We own, from my understanding, listening to the Board of Finance conversation, and our staff can correct me if I'm wrong, we own 700,000 dollars of that number. So, you know, in fairness to the first selectman, he's carrying that for us, and has been courteous about that with us, and, you know, that depending on how, you know, the conversation, the first selectman said workman's comp, and that doesn't matter. To the RON rating agencies, I didn't hear really much of response from the Board of Finance to that. I don't know what the facts are there, but I want the board members here to be aware, based on following the conversation, that that 700,000 dollars is something that we might need to take ownership of because it's our problem. So I just want to, you know, make sure everyone knows what the facts are here, where the pluses are, where the minuses are, and in fairness to everybody, what we potentially own, too, as we go to the problem. Again, I want to make sure that, as a board, and I know there's different opinions here, I'd like to be able to give Mr. Matola some latitude to work with the Board of Finance to satisfy this. I don't know if there's anything we need to do formally to that point, but I think that we all agree that we want to resolve this problem amicably so that the town isn't hurt and the bond rating isn't damaged, anything like that.
I mean, I think we need to pose the question to them Wednesday. I would expect that at that time, they're going to have some ideas on how to resolve this problem. We know what the issue is, and I will reach out to the chairman and obviously keep everyone informed, and we have a meeting on Wednesday night about how we're going to resolve this issue because it's a significant issue.
Right.
Mrs. Iaccone?
Yeah, and to that point, last week, when I was with the Board of Finance, I specifically asked them that question. How would you like to see this resolved, and what message would you like me to deliver back to the board? At that time, they did not respond, but it's certainly something that, you know, we put in their head and that know that we're looking for direction from them on. So I don't think that's unreasonable for us to go back then, now that they've had some time to sit on it, weigh it, and, you know, Dr. Tittle's offered up a couple of solutions to it, and ones that Mr. Hiller's indicated he's favorable in doing, and they're requesting that we all work together. So I think that's reasonable.
So we'll see how it goes. We're there next week. Anything else? Let's move on to the next. We know what the problem is and what the issue is here. So thank you all. Old business, we're on item seven, approval of high school media technology curriculum. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the high school media technology curriculum. I see Mrs. Brand seconded by Mrs. Zahn. Any discussion? We had this presentation at our last meeting. Public comment on this issue, this issue only? Seeing none, we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous? But for the record, Mrs. Albin wasn't feeling well, so she had to leave. Okay, we're on approval, item B, approval of long-range facilities plan with MGT of America capacity deficiencies. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the long-range facilities plan with MGT of America capacity deficiencies. And, look, do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand seconded by Mrs. Iaccone. Dr. Tittle, I turn this over to you initially for a discussion.
Mr. Cullen probably should come up to the table for this. I'm not sure what you want to do with this. Last meeting, we had a discussion about this item. We had given you a summary of the projects that we were putting forward in this plan. The pricing for that did not include remedying all of the deficiencies as recommended in the MGT report, and we had given you what those costs would be. So what we did was to update or change the pricing on the big projects to remedy the MGT deficiencies, which, of course, you know, increased the price fairly dramatically. And there was some feeling on the board that, you know, we need to put out there what our needs are, and this is the price, and so really, that's the change that you see. Everything else is pretty much the same. This is an insert of the longer facilities plan that, you know, is still in existence. So this is not the only document that's part of it. So that's what you have in front of you. So that's really all I have to say by way of background, unless Tom has something that about cover it.
Perfect.
Okay.
So this was to get, if I recall correctly, to get us where we felt as a district we needed to be, knowing that it was going to increase the price, but the discussion by the subcommittee was, let's present it all, basically, and that's my understanding of this document. And I saw Mrs. Iaccone raising her hand first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking for, actually, for lack of a better explanation, I'm looking to be spoon-fed. I'm not prepared to vote on this this evening until I have the documentation behind how we achieved our cost estimates and the documentation as to why we're requesting the things that we're requesting. They might very well already be written in the long-term plan, and if they are, if we could receive that for review so it can be picked apart and put together for us, I would find that very helpful. Also, just an explanation, and a detailed explanation as to how you developed your cost estimates, not unlike the, through the chair, to Mr. Cullen, not unlike the documents you put together for the Board of Selectmen, when they were requesting their information as to, you know, history, that kind of stuff. And the reason I bring this all up is so that I have a better understanding of where we're going and what we want to do and why we're doing it. But as you know, we are having an ongoing discussion with other town bodies as to why we're doing what we're doing, how we're getting the numbers we're getting them, and what our justification is. I guess I'm trying to, I don't know what the saying is, head them off at the pass. So I personally am not prepared to vote tonight until I have that information, but I will commend you and say that I think we're heading in the right direction.
And so Mrs. Iaccone wants documents that support the cost estimates and why, specifically why we need to do these projects? I understand that. I think Mr. Carey's next, then Mr. Lou, then Mrs. Brand.
And certainly, that's a reasonable request, and one of the things that gets buried, to Mr. Lou's point, sometimes we talk about subcommittee. We've seen a stack from Mr. Cullen three times this high, but that doesn't mean that the rest of the board enjoyed that information. So if we can, you know, if the majority of the board wants to have us take this back and, you know, summarize and then also bring the backup detail back, I don't think that's unreasonable. One thing I noted in here, and I think it's a miscommunication, that we had, at least from my mind, when we were here last time, and I think it's my fault as much as anyone else here, we were talking about inserting the MGT numbers. In my mind, I felt that was going to be just for Riverfield, the major projects, Riverfield, Howlin' Hill, and Mill Hill. Possibly, well, I want to look at Dwight that way, but the three major ones, possibly Dwight. For example, we see an increase here in Osborne Hill, and that's where, you know, we were looking at the hallway in Osborne Hill and the reaching cost previously. The decision was made before this board was seated on how to fix Osborne Hill. So I would suggest moving that out. If we want to leave Dwight, that's fine, but I think that the direction we gave was this change out to the MGT numbers, and in my head, in my head, anyway, which needed to be communicated verbally, and it wasn't. I wanted to see the MGT numbers for the three major elementary projects, which was Riverfield, Howlin' Hill, and Mill Hill, and not necessarily to jack up the others. So I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but that's kind of where.
Just, I would agree that that should be eliminated, and I don't know if anyone else has a feeling on that, through the sense of the body.
Yes, and I just...
That wasn't our intent to put that in there.
Yeah, I don't think that was the intent, but I don't think that's how we communicated it, and I think that we kind of get the staff running around in circles doing all this stuff. So I apologize, Mr. Collins. I know that you...
It's not a problem. We took the schools in this four-year plan and the capacity deficiencies out of the MGT report and molded them together.
And one of the thing I heard...
So Dwight and Osborne Hill fell in that.
Yeah, exactly. So one of the things I heard from, was, again, I don't think that we're going to look to maximize the capacity of a school that's falling behind below 300 kids right now. So I think we want to take Dwight off, too, and put it back to the project that you needed to get it up to speed with, you know, air and sprinklers and whatever other code, you know, ADA that you needed. The other thing is, is I heard from members of this board, just if we're going to move in this direction and move in this back, and I want to hear from everyone else, obviously, but I heard from members of this board last time that we wanted to prioritize, and I think that's a good idea. And I do want to hear from the superintendent and his team in terms of what his priorities would be, but in my mind, the short list is Riverfield, the changes needed at Fairfield Ludlow High School, Howlin' Hill, and Mill Hill would be my top four priorities. Looking at the dollar amounts on those and knowing what the capital plan is, we probably won't see those all in four years, but that's how I would prioritize it, and maybe as we go through this process, we can get some consensus from the board members on what they would want to prioritize, and again, hear from our team to make sure that what we're thinking is right, based on where they think the most urgency is. Maybe we can bring that back and kind of tie it all in the bow and come back with priorities and descriptions as the members want it so that we can get this finalized and out. Again, the intent here is to show needs. This is the list of our needs. What we really need to do beyond getting this list of our needs done so that we can request Riverfield, which I think is what everyone has been looking for and is coming up next, as this is the chicken and the egg with the plan and the project, is we really need to then move to what we discussed and move to the community conversation, outline what the problem is, and look to the other boards to say, you know, what potential solutions can be. I think that we have an idea as a subcommittee, which we hope the board will support in terms of building a master facilities plan, to work with the town, the TFC, to basically find out through professional planners how we can get most bang for our buck in terms of operational capacity in our buildings. I'd like to share that with other town bodies and see what their thoughts are, because we have a series of steps that they can go through to get the remaining information we need, which is how we can best utilize our space to go along with, you know, enrollment figures, capacity, and I know we still are discussing enrollment, but the capacity piece speaks for itself. You know, those are the three real big components we need so that we can have an intelligent community conversation about this and, you know, determine how they want to address this need. And once we understand from all the bodies, you know, if they're willing to move forward with something that's expensive like that, you know, responding to it once it's done, then I think it's the right way to go, and it brings everyone into the circle as it were with this. And it brings everyone into the circle as it were with this problem and finding the solution.
I think I had Mr. Lou next.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Spoon-fed is the word I should have used for the budget. That's what I was looking for. In regards to this, I sit on that subcommittee, and so I'm surprised that this didn't come to us before it came here. I know sometimes there's urgent need to keep things moving, but we canceled the meeting, and I'm surprised to see it here now. And I think what I'm hearing other board members say is how I feel as well. You know, Mr. Carey speaks a lot of wisdom. I think I just would say it in a plainer way, which would be, there's no plan yet. We have a lot of numbers. We have a lot of categories and boxes that we all know need to get done, but there is no plan. There is no plan of where the children are going based on projections. There is no plan based on the needs that MGT found out in terms of capacities, of what we think we can build and what we cannot build. And so, all of this, to me, is a bunch of numbers, which are great to be able to pin down to say, oh, maybe this is going to cost this much. But it doesn't have any scope or scheme to things in terms of where we are going with the district. And is one of the major reasons why I got involved with this Board of Education. So, to seem to me to sort of say, yes, let's do this and go forward, is just repeating the same stuff that we saw when I was a parent sitting out in that audience pulling my hair out. I can't vote on something like this at this time, and I think we should spend our time quickly getting to what's immediately right now that needs to be done maintenance-wise and concentrate the rest of the year figuring out a long-range plan based on all the new information we have and how we are going to approach. I mean, we're looking at elementary schools, which is absolutely important, but we also have this bubble coming up from the middle schools, and we're not looking at the high schools, except for roofs. This is a problem, because we know we are going to have that bubble there very soon. So, to me, I mean, like I said, I sit on this board, so I'm part of it, but I find that we're not really getting anywhere. And I actually, again, it's another argument for me to say, I don't know why we have these subcommittees. This should just be done at the board level so we can do it once, and we can do it, and everybody knows, and everybody knows what's going on. But that's just my point of view on it. Thank you.
Mrs. Brand, then I think Mrs. Iaccone.
I'm actually not prepared to support this as well, but for different reasons. One of the things I'd like to see is when we bring a maintenance project or a school project forward, what matrix we're using to determine its priority? If we're talking about a maintenance issue, are we talking about safety? Is it prudent to spend money now as opposed to waiting till later and having it cost more? Are we talking about, for instance, are we talking about whether we're doing a Jennings bathroom or the Dwight bathrooms? I think if we had a matrix that would start to put things, as we've talked about it, in appropriate priority force. The same is true, I think, that we have when we're looking at school projects, and are we looking at, because we're in a desperate condition, portables are falling apart, do we need, right, I know, but seats? Or are we seeking educational space? We've unfortunately been working on pretty much space and haven't really gotten to the educational appropriate part. The other thing is, I think if we're going to make and start to clearly say what our expectations are, what our needs are, I think it would be prudent to also have this in alignment with our projections, because I think then it would be much more thorough. We would be backing it up with what we have, and I think it would also help us set our priorities so that the areas that we see in terms of site by site where we have issues, we will be sure that we will address them appropriately and in a timely fashion. So, I think we're getting there. It's better, but I don't think we're there yet.
Mrs. Iaccone.
Thank you. I'm going to kick myself for saying it, but I'm going to say it anyway. You don't move a district forward with sarcasm. Speaking to this recommended motion, should we withdraw this motion, have it sent back to subcommittee? Is that, I mean, that's what I'm kind of hearing.
I seconded it.
That's fine, but I don't mind the subcommittee looking at it again, but I, my concern, and Mr. Lou does make a good point on this issue, I would agree with him on this. The whole board needs to weigh in on this thing. And if you wanted, send it back to subcommittee for us to prioritize what we think we need to do in the immediate future, because there isn't some money that the town is going to provide us to do some things in the immediate future, then we should take advantage of that. And I don't have a problem doing that. So, let me hear from other board members on that.
Can I jump into one technical point?
Sure.
That we are carrying two numbers for the high schools in this plan. Okay? The issue of the bubble of enrollment moving forward is most acute at Fairfield Ludlow. We're carrying a $4 million number in there. So, I agree that you need to see some more backup on how we arrived at that number, what that would buy us, and this sort of thing, but I wanted to point that out. And we are carrying a smaller number in 1314 for Fairfield Ward. The problem is not as acute at Fairfield Ward. The bulk of the money we're carrying in this for Fairfield Ward is the roof replacement spread out over a number of years. And that is on a track right now to actually happen. And the Fairfield Ludlow High School number we're carrying in 1112 is the windows. But separate and apart from the windows, we're carrying a $4 million number to do renovations at Ludlow for the bubble. Just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Carey? Mr. Fattabean, I'm sorry.
I guess, in my view, I think what I'd like to see is it's sort of divided out into two types of projects. One of the projects that are based on enrollment and educational needs to deliver the program. I happen to think that's the more primary and important issue, and like to sort of have some of these numbers broken out, which ones relate to those issues. And then secondarily, the issues that relate to maintenance and putting the district in a good condition that is, we all seem to want. And then, in that situation, also prioritize which ones are the most bad condition so we can figure out which ones to tackle first. I would also suggest that we may need to stretch out this timeline, unfortunately, based on the cost. And I'd be sort of hesitant to commit to a total dollar amount as projected in this four-year projection. Maybe if we prioritize them in a way, we can go in a direction that may not initially, on its surface in four years, seem to cost so much.
Mr. Carey?
Just as a refresher, and we've gone through this so many times in the subcommittee, I forget that people don't know this forwards and backwards. And Dr. Tittle correctly points out, in the second year, the money is for the high school and the high school recruiting problem and reconfiguring there at Ludlow. Riverfield is pretty straightforward. It's in our aging class of schools, and it has five portables that have just about aged to attrition. The average age is about 10 years, they're circa 2000, 2001. By the time we get a project at this scope going, it will be, you know, they'll be at attrition. And then the next two projects really are along the same lines. They're schools that have got a lot of maintenance and code and core issues just because of age, and they were designed for a different program and a different era, but they have portables that are aging to attrition, both at Holland Hill and Mill Hill. Also, what you see, if you look at the MGT capacity report, is these three schools are the most impacted operationally by their configurations. So, you're looking at operational or program capacity at these buildings where there are 350 to 450 students roughly, in Mill Hill and Riverfield, and the 200 and less range. So, the capacity report confirms what the administration's been telling us in terms of where the need is. These are just, you know, unfortunately, these are bodies sitting in portables that are going to need a seat when the portable's turned to dust type scenarios. I understand and agree that there's a bigger picture that we have to work to. This kind of, in my mind, again, is a placeholder to say, these are the bare minimum priorities that we have to really look at against the dollars that have been allocated in the capital plan. But the bigger issue is the bigger issue, and other board members have made this point, that we have to be able to tie all these things together, these things being the capacity report, the finalization of enrollment figures after we've had that discussion. And then really, the piece that we're looking to get more data on is a master facilities plan for our buildings, which is a document we haven't created yet. Once we have those three pieces of information, we can tie them together in a more formal long-term plan that includes things like redrawing boundaries if necessary and adjusting to the demographer's report, and utilizing the space creatively, you know, getting the most bang for our buck out of those spaces. That's a bigger conversation. That's a community conversation, you know, and there's a reality. There's one other thing I just want to point out, because I've had this, I've had a couple calls, and I've had this question, I've had some elected officials ask me this question. Why is the number a moving number? Okay, well, the reason the number's a moving number is that we had a projection on what we were going to do. Mr. Cullen, you can, if I go off the rails, you can help me here. And then we got a report from an outside consultant. That outside consultant told us what we needed to run the program in each of these buildings. And in some cases, that increased the number of rooms we needed. Now, this is very interesting, because if you've been following my pitch for years, it's been, well, we should probably make all the schools larger and get them closer to maybe a Burr or McKinley size. But the reality is, is that we're, by utilizing these MGT figures, able to expand like a Riverfield by, I believe, 10 classroom spaces, which is roughly 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, and not have to blow it out another 12,000 square feet to make it look like a Stratfield. So, I think this is a medium here that gets us our program without necessarily getting us what would be described as large S on the other side.
So, the direction I think this board wants the subcommittee to look at is to prioritize the four or five projects that we think we need as a board in the next year or so.
Subcommittee serves the pleasure of the board, whatever you want, we can go and do.
Well, I want some direction.
I'll give you, can I, can I jump in? I'll give you direction. I'll give you direction from my opening statement now, having listened to everyone speak at the board table, which is, I think that administration should take this back, come back to us, tell us how you got your estimates, show us the history, show us where you've been, explain to us why you're asking for what you're asking. I'll add in a level of that. Put in your priorities. I liked Mr. Fattabean's idea of breaking it out through maintenance versus enrollment. I think that's probably something easy to do. I see Mr. Cullen shaking his head. And then I think we go from there. We're at the board table. We're ready, we're ready to go. We're close. We're close. We are so close to finishing this. And to Mr. Carey's point, there's a bigger discussion that needs to be had about redistricting, whether or not we redistrict, whether we need to redistrict. That's not tied into this particular point at this time. It doesn't mean it's not going to be tied in later on. So, I think that's where we need to go. We're close, we're ready to go. I want to see those two pieces. I like how Mr. Fattabean and Mr. Carey have incorporated in some other things, if we could do that. I think that's the clear direction that we need to give to administration. So, you know, we have a motion on the table. I, you know, I don't know if you want to vote that up or down. I'm happy to offer up another motion to make what I just had happen. So, let's go. Where's our parliamentarian? Do we have one?
Well, let me hear from Mrs. Brand first, and then we can...
The only piece, again, that I would add to that is a matrix, because I think moving forward, then we're able to actually explain how we arrived at these things, and I think that would actually help validate our requests.
So... Withdraw the motion. Just withdraw the law. We have to withdraw the motion.
That's fine, I second it. Sure. I move that we direct administration to develop and provide the cost estimates rationale behind their numbers and provide justification and explanation as to the facilities' needs and maintenance needs of the district. Yeah, I know there's another piece to there. I just didn't want to get all cumbersome.
I would propose, instead of referring it directly to the administration, we refer to the committee to work with the administration to accomplish the goals that Mrs. Iaccone had just indicated.
I'm not amenable to that, but I just think we're past the committee level at this point.
I agree.
We need a second for this, if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, that's true.
Seconding Mrs. Iaccone's motion. Any discussion on Mrs. Iaccone's motion? Yes, Mrs. Iaccone?
Just, I agree. I would leave it the way it is and direct the administration.
Me too. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, ready to vote? Public comment on this motion, this motion only? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I want to make sure we don't end up going in circles on this too many times. Is it our expectation that the next board meeting, which looks like it's going to be the 29th, is that the time when you'd like to consider this again?
How soon, how much time do you guys need to work on this appropriately?
We could have something for you on the 29th. That's not a problem.
Okay, then we'll take it on the 29th, if that's okay with the board.
If there's an issue, let us know.
Okay. At this point, I also want to make clear that we are going to not provide backup and remove the Osborne Hill project. Do I have that correct?
Correct.
All right. And we are going to take the Dwight project and reduce its scope to sort of the bare essentials.
Yes.
Okay. Understanding that any of these projects may get moved out a year or whatever, that's a different story. All right, so, and we will provide more detail, specifically the big bones of, the big ticket items, really where we would concentrate our efforts.
Yes.
Riverfield, Fairfield Ludlow, Fairfield Ward, Holland Hill, and Mill Hill. Those are the big ones.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we will clarify whether or not these are due to enrollment, capacity, safety, or some other category.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item C, approval of roof warranty extension project. That's right. It's in your plan. You're doing the motion, all right. Sorry. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the roof warranty extension project Roger Sherman Elementary School, North Stratford Elementary School, Osborne Hill Elementary School, Riverfield Elementary School, and Holland Hill Elementary School. Mrs. Brand, second. Mrs. Iaccone, we discussed this. It is part of our plan.
Well, good, then that's left to discuss next week.
Right.
And I think we have discussed this in great detail, so I think we can vote on it. Any questions, discussion on this? Nothing? All the comment on this motion, this motion only? Seeing none, we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. New business. Well, I'll read it, but I don't know if we're going to do this now. Authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Riverfield Elementary School project. Recommended motion that the Board of Education authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Riverfield Elementary School project. I assume this motion was contingent on us passing a long-range facilities plan, so why don't we just withdraw that right now, and it'll come up at a later time?
We'll put it on the next agenda in the event that you pass the facilities plan?
All right, so...
Then we'll have this item also?
Now, I don't want to be a nitpicker, but I just want to make sure we don't table this into oblivion.
No, we can't.
No, we'll just move it to the next meeting.
Is there a motion to postpone, or if we table it, I just want to make sure we can bring it back so that we don't kill it.
Put it on the next agenda.
We'll just put it on the next agenda.
So, do we need a formal motion to take this off the agenda, or we're just going to move it forward?
We can do a formal motion to table.
No, you don't have to table it, just, we could just get a sense of the body that you're going to put on.
This will be on the next agenda. We can do it that way. New business. Acceptance of Tomlinson Middle School Project Number 051112 EA. Wow. Isn't it ready for another renovation?
It's in the long-range plan.
Yeah.
Further out.
What is this?
This is to get reimbursed from the state? Is this what this is?
That's correct, for the board. Well, first of all, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we need to move it, and yeah, I'll move it.
I'm sorry, I didn't read the motion. Recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the Tomlinson Middle School Project Number 051112 EA. accept the Tomlinson Middle School Project Number 051112EA as complete. Mrs. Iacono moved it, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Discussion. Turn it over to Dr. Title.
That's just what you all were saying, that this is the formalization so that the town can get the, you know, close the project out, get the final reimbursement, do the accounting, right?
It's actually to finish the Bureau School Facility piece, which is the EDO 49F. If that's all accepted, then it goes to the audit phase and goes back to the town.
Mr. Carey, had a comment?
Has the CEO been signed off on this? Are we all done?
Yes.
How long ago was that? This is a whole project. This is like 2001, isn't it?
Project application was submitted February 12, 2004, and-
Wow, it wasn't born yet.
The final deadline for construction was June 30, 2007.
So just out of curiosity, why are we getting to funding this many years later?
There was an issue with-
A minute or less, if I don't want to take up too-
59 change orders that were going back and forth from the state on the project, which was eligible, which was ineligible, and finalized about a month ago.
It does not mean that the town is getting any more money back. This is to audit whether or not the, what the town was reimbursed for this project was accurate.
Oh, okay.
Well, the state actually holds 5%.
They hold 5% in case they were wrong. If it's, so, you know, this is to finish it off.
And not to be that neurotic, but we've heard a lot about projects, and then once they, as they say, turn the keys over, as the Board of Ed doesn't build buildings, we accept them from the town gratefully. Do we have any, by voting for this, are we accepting the keys, and are we accepting any problems with the keys? Any dings on the, on the fenders? No, they're, long ago, in 2008 and '09, there were issues with the boiler room and the fireproofing, but that's been fixed.
Thank you.
Any public, any other discussion on this motion? Public discussion on this motion? This motion only? Ready to vote? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes, and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorm will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time. The item is under consideration by the board. Public comment. Please identify yourself and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Long, South Board, and I've sent you all an email this week. And first, let me start off by saying thank you all for all the time you spend on helping our education system here in Fairfield. I'm sure that all of you decided to become elected officials in this regard, so we can make education better. And as you know from my email, I came to the board last year. I spoke to Dr. Rosato several times several years ago. Riverfield is currently doing an elementary feedback survey every year, and I've asked you all to consider, and I implore you to understand that I, I believe, and I think most of your constituency believes, that every parent and every teacher and every child has valuable feedback that could help make our school education system better. And I just ask you to please, as a board, to consider how the town of Fairfield can ask for feedback annually to help begin the process of getting people used to giving feedback to make our education system better. I do want to thank Dr. Title in person and his administration for asking the community for feedback during the prismatic survey process. That was wonderful. And I know that we received over 200 responses, which was a lot more than the town had received previously. And I know that if we continue on the path of asking our constituency what our priorities are, or how they think things are going in the individual school, I know that as a group, you guys will be able to make better decisions. You'll be able to come to consensus more quickly. And most importantly, every parent in the town is also a taxpayer. And when you're able to have the information from parents and those people working in the schools, and even from the kids, it helps prioritize where people want to spend their dollars and how to improve education. So I waited my two and a half hours just to say thank you, and to let you know how much I appreciate the good work you've done so far, and I sincerely looking forward to seeing more good works. And I'm hoping that maybe at the end of the year, we can see at least at some of the schools, some more opportunity to give feedback. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Open board comment, item 10. Mrs. Iacono has something.
I do. Last meeting, I got cut off because we ran out of time, but I wanted to commend the administration for their program changes to the summer school. I received the packet, and it was, I'm sure we all received the packet. They're unbelievable changes. They're competitive, and there's some really great stuff in there. So after getting beat up for a week and a half, I just want to say thank you, and you guys did a really phenomenal job.
Thank you. Any other open board comment? Seeing none. Item 11. Do we have to go into executive session?
Yes, we do.
All right. We're gonna convene into executive session. Recommend a motion that, that this regular meeting of the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss pending collective bargaining agreements for Fairfield Education and Professional Association, Fairfield Association of Educational Office Professionals, and ASME Council for Information Technology Technicians. Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Dow.